There it is, sorry about that. Good evening and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Board of Education. I would like to start by explaining the format of tonight's meeting. The Board of Education provides two opportunities for you to express your ideas and share your thoughts. The first will be after we receive an update from our superintendent. The second will be after our meeting has concluded. Both sessions will be thirty minutes in duration and all speakers will be limited to three minutes to give as many people a chance to speak as possible. Please approach any one of the microphones in front of the auditorium. Please state your name and address prior to beginning your comments with the district clerk and accurately reflect the minutes of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Rogers, our district clerk, will let you know when you have thirty seconds left so you can wrap up your comments before the end of the three minutes. You must be stationed at a microphone to express your ideas and share your thoughts with the Board of Education. The Board of Education respects the varied opinions of the community and will provide a comfortable and safe environment. Any behaviors that threaten the integrity of tonight's meeting will not be tolerated and will cause the Board of Education to adjourn the meeting. Complaints or challenges should follow procedures listed on District Policy fourteen hundred, fourteen ten, and/or fourteen forty, which are included on the materials table. Thank you for your anticipated courtesy and cooperation. In the event of fire, and/or if you hear the fire bell, you must leave the building. The first ten rows in the auditorium should use the exit to any left, to my left, sorry. Those in the back of the room should use the rear doors and exit the buildings to the left. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to amend the order of business?
I make a motion to amend the order of business contained in the public meeting agenda set forth in Policy two-three-five-zero to allow the Board to vote upon the consent agenda, review and vote on discussion and action items, and consider discussion items prior to the superintendent's update during the September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the Board of Education.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of items one, A through G, two, A through D, and three, A through D be approved as a whole with action recorded separately.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve a resolution that will set the tax levy?
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education approve the setting of the tax levy for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year.
Mr. Motisi?
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. This resolution allows the district to transmit the final tax levy information through both the towns of Babylon and towns of Oyster Bay for the current school year, as approved by the voters back in May of last year. Shortly after that, we will post a fact sheet to the website explaining how the taxes work. And as always, I'm available by phone or email to residents that have any questions regarding the tax bills as they come to them.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Policy fifteen hundred, Public Use of Facilities and Exhibits, E-one and E-two?
I make a motion to approve the Policy one-five-zero-zero, Public Use of Facilities and Exhibits E-dash-one, Free Schedule, and E-dash-two, Fee Schedule, in the absence of an approved budget.
Second.
Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. Both these exhibits, fifteen hundred dot one and fifteen hundred dot two, have been updated to reflect the fee paid by groups that do not meet the residency requirements of two hundred dollars per hour, plus the cost of required additional services for the high school pool.
Any questions from the Board? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the Board Committee assignments?
I make a motion that the Board of Education of the Farmingdale Union Free School District approve the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two Board Committee assignments. Committee assignments continue until a new membership is established.
Second.
Okay, we're gonna now run through each committee and determine what Board members will cover which committee for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. The Order Committee, myself and Mr. Giadano were on last year, and Mr. D'Amico as an alternate.
I'll remain.
Remain? BOSI's representative for Budget Workshops?
I'll stay on that mic.
Because myself and Mr. Espinoza as Board members, Mr. Giadano as an alternate?
Yes.
Facilities Advisory Committee, Anthony Giadano and Arlene Sodi as the Board members, myself and Mario Espinoza as the alternates?
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
Good, okay. Policy Committee, Kathy Lively as the Board member, and Arlene Sodi and Mario Espinoza as the alternates?
That's fine.
Safety Committee, Kathy Lively and Suzanne D'Amico as the Board members, and Mario Espinoza and Anthony Giadano as the alternates?
I'm good.
It's good.
Wellness Committee, Arlene Sodi with Kathy Lively as the alternate?
Good.
That's mine.
NISBA State Legislative Network, Kathy Lively with Mario Espinoza as the alternate?
That's fine.
Legislative Action Committee, Kathy Lively and Suzanne D'Amico with Anthony Giadano as the alternate?
Good.
Refit was myself with Kathy Lively as an alternate?
Good.
That's fine. Okay, so Community Activities Section, Farmingdale Youth Council is Kathy Lively and Anthony Giadano
I'm good.
With Ralph Morales and Mario Espinoza as the alternates?
Good.
PTA Council is myself and Kathy Lively with Mario Espinoza and Suzanne D'Amico as the alternates?
Good.
Good. Library Liaison, Mario Espinoza, and I was the alternate, but I believe Ms. D'Amico was gonna take over as the alternate this year? SEPTA, Suzanne D'Amico, Mario Espinoza, with Anthony Giadano and myself as the alternates?
I'll remain.
Good.
Kathy, we're good? Chamber of Commerce, Kathy Lively, with Suzanne D'Amico as the alternate? Community Summit, myself with Anthony Giadano and Kathy Lively as the alternates?
Good.
The Concerned Citizens of Farmingdale, Kathy Lively and Arlene Sodi with Mario Espinoza and Anthony Giadano as the alternates?
That's mine.
Yep.
Miscellaneous Local Associations, Kathy Lively and Ralph Morales as the alternate?
Good.
IDA, Town of Nassau and Town of Babylon, Suzanne D'Amico and myself and Anthony Giadano with the alternates?
Yep.
The Republic Airport Commission is Mario Espinoza with Arlene Sodi as the alternate?
Yep.
That's fine.
And PAL was Ralph Morales with myself and Mario Espinoza as the alternates?
Good.
Thank you, everyone. So...
Can we...
I need a motion here.
Can we have the vote?
Right, yes, I was about to do that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. May I have a motion to approve a voting delegate for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two New York State School Boards Association Annual Convention?
I make a motion that the Board of Education of the Farmingdale Union Free School District appoint Kathy Lively as Farmingdale's Voting Delegate for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two New York State School Boards Association Annual Convention.
Second.
So this year, the New York State School Boards Convention will be held in a virtual environment. Once again, many of the items for discussion will be related to things we learned during the past year and a half as adjustments were made due to the online learning that occurred during the pandemic. It is important now... It is important now more than ever to listen and to learn from school boards across the state. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so next we have items for discussion.
Thank you.
The New York State School Boards Association Resolutions for the twenty-one, twenty-two convention. So the Board has received the Resolutions Workbook from the New York State School Boards Association. There will be a local meeting of the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association to go over each state item to determine recommendations for support or not for each item that will be voted on during the meeting of the delegates on October eighteenth. There are twenty-five resolutions that will be considered, from education funding to resources for students with disabilities to absentee ballots for budget votes, to changes in open meeting laws, and so on. There is a comprehensive listing of work to consider, and this Board will report back to the community in October and November as this important work continues. Are there any resolutions currently that are any particular interest to any Board members? I know we will be discussing this further, but... And Ms. Lively will be our voting rep as always, as we just voted on. Very happy with that.
I don't see any right now. I think once I hit the virtual resolution meeting, then we can bring, I can bring back the questions and the answers and any other questions you guys might have from the group that votes on it during the virtual meeting on Wednesday the twenty-ninth, so... I'd be glad to do that, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Lively, for being our representative.
Thank you.
Mr. Defendini, can we have your monthly update, please?
For sure, thank you, Mr. Goldberg. I want to start with a brief conversation and a debt of gratitude and thanks to our staff and to our students. This year, obviously, has presented a number of challenges by way of our reopening plan. I can tell you, having spent an enormous amount of time, that although things are not perfect, I'm very proud of the work that's gone into our reopening plan. I think that most would agree, the heartbeat of our school has returned. Having our schools back in person, having our students back in almost full capacity right now has really changed quite a bit. The limiting of the number of quarantines we're seeing in district has changed quite a bit for us. The ability for our faculty and our staff to focus on the students that are in front of them by way of amending some of the remote learning opportunities that were upon us last year has changed quite a bit. And as a result of some of the things that we've done to open up school, things feel a lot better than they did last year. If I want to compare things again to where we were last year at this time, things are dramatically different, and I'm just proud of the group of people that have done the work and the students who have really responded beautifully to the opening of schools. So thank you to all in question. Couple of other good pieces of news before we get to, obviously, one of the bigger concerns that we're having at present. Band camp for this year is on. Our students are very excited to say that our students are leaving tomorrow morning to head up to band camp as they would in any other given year. Obviously, we have protocols that we have to meet, but we wanted to make sure that we did everything that we could in order to make sure that we offered opportunities for our students. We know in some instances, the outside world has to make the decisions that they have to make, right? We found out recently that the Newsday Marching Band Festival was canceled. We found out recently that all county music, the festival has actually been canceled for the upcoming school year. That leaves a lot of our students who are in the music program disheartened. We certainly didn't want to let them down by not fulfilling our obligation by continuing to maintain band camp, which is an important part of our schools. So band camp is on. For those of you that had a chance, I know many Board members were at a football game, first football game against Port Washington, it was exciting. Obviously, we got not only a win, but at the same time, the feel was back. There were a lot of people that were there celebrating with the team. The marching band was there, the pep band was there, you know, playing in the stands. It just felt again a lot more like prior years, and everything that we can do to provide those opportunities for our students is important. One of the struggles that we're having that is continuing to cause us problems even today is transportation. Our busing situation at present is not good. We've worked as hard as we could, I give all the credit in the world to Mr. Motisi, his team, the Transportation Office. They are working around the clock, literally around the clock, weekends, evenings, trying to figure out and sort things out, trying to tweak and twist and turn where they can to, you know, make a route a little bit shorter or to try to create a little bit more solidarity in knowing that the bus drivers, you know, know where it is that they need to be going for pickups and drop-offs. All of that being said, we're still having our challenges. We are down approximately one in four bus drivers this year. We're almost down twenty-five percent of the bus drivers. As you know, not unique to Farmingdale, districts across the island, districts across the state, districts across the nation are dealing with this. I did actually recently read that the Massachusetts National Guard has been called in to try to find opportunities to get people driving buses so that kids can go to school effectively. So we're not gonna quit, we're gonna keep trying to do everything that we can. I sent a communication out to the community, hoping that that does gain some traction and we're able to get some more people to do what they need to do in order to get their commercial driver's license and drive buses so that way we can get even better. Because I could be honest with you in saying, the ability for us to get to that promised land of things being where it is that we expect them to be can only happen when we have the appropriate number of people driving buses. Until then, it's, you know, we're putting Band-Aids on things and making the best of a bad situation. But again, I didn't want to lose the opportunity to thank Mr. Motisi and the team over there who is working very hard to try to make the best of this situation. Some good news, the Aquatic Center, the last I had reported to you. We had a bit of bad news at that moment because the roofing system, which was coming from overseas, was delayed, and we had indicated that although it wasn't gonna cause a problem with regard to the project itself, it was gonna cause a delay in the project. We were hoping to be able to turn this thing over sooner than our last estimated time for reasons unbeknownst to us. I mean, we have certainly pushed the vendors at every turn to meet their obligations under the contract. Some of that pressure might have had its intended effect as the roofing material, five eighteen-wheelers worth of material arrived Thursday and Friday of last week. We now have all of the material that we need for the roof. Didn't start today because of the impending weather, probably not tomorrow either, but by week's end, you'll probably see people running around the roof, putting on the initial layer, as well as the membrane, and then the insulation, and then the final roofing system on top of that. So we'll be able to get to the inside, do the interior finishes, and put this project back on track. So a bit of good news from where we were a month ago. And then the last one is just a general thanks again to all of the different people, including the PTAs specifically in this instance, who have really done an unbelievable job partnering with us, working within the confines of the rules that have been given to us to put all of those things that have become bastions here in the community online for our kids, for our families, for our parents. The barbecues, you know, and all of those special events, the Picture Day and all those things that we hold valuable here in Farmingdale, that we hold dear to ourselves here in Farmingdale, are on. And that's with thanks to the volunteers who are making that happen. So a special thanks to the PTA for making all of those efforts. With that, I'm done with my update, Mr. Goldberg. Any questions from the Board?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Defendini. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting for the first public participation. Please be sure to clearly state your name and address when you approach the microphone. As a reminder, public participation will be limited to thirty minutes. Each individual speaker will have three minutes in which to ask their questions or to make any statements. The district clerk will hold the timer for us. If we do not get to all of the speakers during the first thirty minutes, we will reopen later in the meeting to continue. The meeting will now open for thirty minutes.
Good evening, Barbara Abud. My address is on file. I will be speaking on behalf of several hundred members of our community tonight. Please allow me to read my letter in its entirety. Last month, parents came out to thank you for your mask-optional opening plan. We felt heard and that both the Board of Education and the superintendent put together a safe and detailed plan for reopening for September. We also asked what the contingency plan you had in place should Hoco come in and attempt to unlawfully override that decision. The lawyer speaking on behalf of Farmingdale was unable to answer that question. Now that Hoco has done exactly that, what is Farmingdale prepared to do? In my hands, I have more than four hundred signatures collected in two hours this week from voters and community members. We want you to know you have our full support to take legal action against the state. This legal action is instrumental to protecting the rights and local authority of parents, school boards, taxpayers, and more. This legal action is not a mask-versus-unmasked lawsuit. This is about constitutional rights. New York Code's Rules and Regulation, codified at ten NY-CRR-two-dot-six, will remove all authority from duly-elected school boards. Moving forward, schools will now be required to accept any mandate that is premised on this regulation. The process of writing, amending, and appealing policies is overridden under this regulation. Amazingly, the Department of Health repealed and revised a regulation by unilaterally ignoring its own mandates and procedures with no legislative oversight and under the guise of public emergency. As a result of this illegal action, all stakeholders will fall under this jurisdiction of an unchecked authority to adhere to any mandate the Department of Health sees fit. Moreover, as Department of Health officials are not elected, the public has no recourse to free itself from these mandates. Hear me and hear me loud, we will have no recourse when the vaccine mandates come, and they are coming. The Board of Education serves at the behest of the voters in the community. We implore you to follow suit with fellow Board members from Massapequa and Locust Valley. They are leading the charge against the unconstitutional and undemocratic regulation. There is a small window for our district to join this legal action and protect local control for our districts. Therefore, we, the four hundred undersigned members of our community, petition the Farmingdale Board of Education as follows. It is in the best interest of our Board, as representatives of the parents and taxpayers of Farmingdale, to immediately contact Hamburger and Associates. This needs to be done post-haste. This law firm will provide a free consultation. It is your duty to abide by due diligence and at least hear what is being proposed. The community is waiting to hear back from you on this position. We also expect an emergency session to give this issue the priority it demands. Moms for Liberty and Save Our Schools have an island-wide outreach and are committed to the protection of parental choice, local control, and constitutional protections. All school district leadership is being called to action. We must not relinquish our right to self-governance without a fight. As a community, we will support and we will assist you in whatever you need to protect the school district from government overreach. Ignoring this request will constitute a dereliction of your duties and a violation of your oath to office. We would like a commitment tonight that you will have a consultation with Hamburger and Associates. Thank you.
Ms. Abud, can we have a copy of that petition, please, to security?
Absolutely. I do need the copy back, though. These are the originals. But you are welcome to this, and you will see that all signatures were checked with ID and are Farmingdale residents, and here is a copy of the letter as well.
Ms. Abud, are these the originals?
Would you like us to make copies right now?
Yes, that would be great, thank you.
Okay, I'll help them make copies. Mr. Morrow?
Eric Morrow, twenty-five Dale Drive, Farmingdale, New York, one-one-seven-three-five. One, I'm just gonna give you a quick anecdote, just to sum up this whole thing. When we were kids, we always had that one friend, maybe two friends, that just kept on changing the rules to the game. And after like two times playing with them, we just stopped playing with them until they grew up or learned. And we gotta stop playing with New York. They're the kid that keeps on changing the rule of the game. And we have to basically tell them we're not gonna play with them anymore. So you guys have to understand that this mask mandates and this ridiculousness that were going on one month ago wasn't an issue, but all of a sudden COVID exists again here. But over the summer, zero cases, it's back. So we just want your help in that regard. So I just, little quick anecdote, so thank you. And I appreciate that you guys stand with us. Two other pressing needs for my family. My daughter is definitely in eighth grade and still looking to be on varsity cheer, and I think all the varsity cheer girls are here to support that. And as a promise to her, she'd really love, and so would her four friends, love to be on the team. And I think these girls that are seniors are not worried about them taking space. They really want them on the team, so that's that one. And then how it drop off and pick up in the mornings is extremely dangerous. There needs to be police officers or something there watching drop off at this point because my wife and I have seen children numerous times almost be hit coming through cars and cars speeding around. So I just want that on record. I know that's not you guys, but I think it needs to be said in a public meeting because God forbid a kid gets hit, that's gonna be worse than all this mask stuff combined. So that's the three things, and then just to put a little bow on the first part. I just, we just want to know that Farmingdale is with us. You guys put out the sheet, and you said we were coming back to school with no masks, and you said that, you know, you would be very lenient. But that's really fallen to the teachers, and if the teacher's lenient with the mask, the kids get a break, and if the teacher's not lenient with the mask, the kids feel miserable, and they're yelled at all day that they're not wearing their mask right, and they feel like they're a bad student. And it shouldn't be the luck of the draw on the teachers. They need to really be told, and I know it's not really your union, but they need to be told that if a kid needs a mask break, regardless if it's not scheduled, they deserve the mask break. I don't need to be calling school, and numerous parents don't need to be calling school or speaking to teachers over and over and over about the right to breathe. That's really the key to it, and we just want to know that Farmingdale's with us. So please, please just take the call with the law firm, and if you decide from there, maybe you could tell us why, but it will help us. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ella Schaffizer, and my address is Sixteen League Drive, Farmingdale, New York, one-one-seven-three-five. I am currently in ninth grade. I'm here to ask you to please consider allowing eighth graders to cheer on the high school competition team. I started cheering at the age of five for the Farmingdale Hawks. I started compe...
You can move the mic down if you need to.
Yeah. I'm here to ask you to please consider allowing eighth graders to cheer on the high school competition team. I started cheering at the age of five for the Farmingdale Hawks. I started competitive cheer with the Hawks at age seven and fell in love with competition cheer. When I was 10, I left the Hawks to begin full year All-Star cheer at Ploton Athletics. I've been to Summit twice, which is a national tournament for All-Star cheer, and have competed in many competitions over the past four years all over the United States. Cheer is unlike any other sport. It's one of the most important things in my life. It makes me at ease, it makes me happy, and helps me with anxiety and stress. It also helps me stay disciplined and focused while at school, knowing that once school's over, I'll be at cheer. Cheer gives me confidence and keeps me fit as cheer is a year-round sport. I've also stayed on high honor roll while balancing cheer. When my mom told me that the competition cheer had been improved in Farmingdale schools, I was really happy and excited. I followed their journey and couldn't believe when they won states. As you know, we were one of the first, we were the first team from Nassau County to win from Division I. Farmingdale was in every newspaper, and many people at my private cheer gym have told me how amazing it is that they won states. I couldn't wait to get to high school to try out for this year's cheer team. I'm incredibly thankful that I made the team and have this opportunity. Every person on the team is committed and are really good kids who welcomed me and the two other freshmen on the team. The problem is we don't have enough flyers. If you don't know what a flyer is, I can explain it to you, but it's not a position that can be easily taught. There are two eighth graders who are flyers and are very interested in cheer. One of those flyers I have worked with at my gym, and I know they are talented. At All-Star Cheer, the divisions are broken up by age rather than grade. And so I can cheer with many kids, and most of them are in sixth through 10th grade. I also know that almost every other school that we will be competing against has eighth graders on their team. If you allow eighth graders to come onto the team, it will give us the greatest opportunity to win this year and to spend our New York State title. These eighth graders will not be taking someone else's spot on the team as there are no other flyers. And this will allow more bases and backs to be on the competition team. I could talk for hours about how much cheer means to me, but I know but I know you don't have all night. I could talk for, I respectfully ask that you consider allowing eighth graders to cheer on the team this year. The best part about cheering is winning after all the hard work you've done and the bonds you build with your teammates. I know if you allow eighth graders, it will give us the greatest chance to be successful. Thank you for listening and your time.
My name is Kate McLaughlin. My address is 148 North Road, Farmingdale, New York. Hello. My name is Kate McLaughlin, and I'm a senior at Farmingdale High School. I was chosen as captain for this year's varsity cheerleading team. I like to begin by saying that it is an honor to be chosen as one of the two captains of this team. It is an incredible opportunity to be a part of a growing program like this. As an athlete, being a part of this competition team has been the most incredible three years of my life. Being able to say that I was a part of a team that made history by becoming the first Nassau County team to win a New York State championship was overwhelming. The feeling was unlike any other emotion an athlete could experience. I've learned so much in such a short period of time, and I want to be able to pass on my knowledge to future cheerleaders. We spend hours together every day creating a team that is more like a family. We're here to support one another, to learn, to understand, to achieve, and succeed. As a family, we'd like to ask you to consider assisting us in expanding our program. We do not have the same competitive advantages as our opponents because we are a new team on the competition mat. Most schools' districts have a junior varsity competition team, and some even have a middle school team, neither of which live here in Farmingdale School District. With these existing situations, teams from other districts have often pulled up their athletes, hence making them more successful in their competitions. We have worked extremely hard to win both our county and state championships. Some would even say our blood, sweat, and tears have been spilled on those mats. We believe that allowing eighth graders to participate in our evolving competition program would be an incredible opportunity. The majority of the younger cheerleaders are already members of outside cheer teams and have the experience, skills, and talent that we were looking for in order to expand our team and continue to receive the recognition that we have acquired over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, girls. It takes a lot of bravery to come up to the microphone. Appreciate it. Congratulations on being captain.
Good evening. Jeff Roth. My address is on file. I try to refrain from exercising my right to free expression by watching that I don't make any inappropriate gestures like what went on at the last meeting. See, if I did that, what would have happened was you would have sent a lawyer to my, you would have sent a warning letter to my house from your attorney. You would have hand-delivered it by the police and then sent it certified return receipt requested. So your last meeting, your attorney, your representation, Richard Caricio gave some excellent facts and speeches. But he did say, quote, "In no way are they or I attempting to disrespect you or to argue with you." They respect you, and I respect you, and we respect your right to come here and tell us your feelings and tell us what troubles you and tell us how you view things. Paul would frequently say, "You're welcome to stop by anytime the office after school hours to question any about, any issues with the facilities." Is that only applied to those who do not have a different opinion than you? You selectively enforce that? Of course, action from your previous board, that doesn't mean you have to continue it. You know, your colleagues chose to take a path and would not change their course. And for that would be admitting an error, okay? Richard Caricio also explained something about you should be writing to the authors, okay, who are penning these laws. Well, writing letters to our politicians is a waste of time. For example, I have a letter to a politician from 2016 about live streaming meetings. It took until 2021 and a pandemic. So, you know, writing letters, I don't know who's worse, some of the Long Island politicians or some of the Long Island school board members. Though I do know who receives 2/3 of our property taxes, and it's not the town or the county. So, for example, Laura Curran, our executive, inherited the nightmare with our assessment system and created the taxpayer protection plan. She used to be on the Baldwin School of Board of Ed. And actually, I think she was on the Board of Ed when I was doing a Public Works project there. Our local senator, Senator Brooks, he was in Seaford Board of Ed. And I also was doing a project in Seaford schools while he was on the Board of Ed. His platform, and he's on his third term now, was school tax reform. At one point, he wanted to fund it through income tax. Now, here's another great aspect you have about the assessment. There's something called the school tax guarantee.
Mr. Roth, you're almost finished. You just have a few more seconds.
The school tax guarantee. We'll discuss that. So writing letters to the politicians are useless. You know, you think writing a letter will change this culture on this corrupted, polluted island? Look at how difficult it is for these parents to try to get you to listen and join a lawsuit that Locust Valley started way before the meeting that you had adjourned. I look forward to the second public speaking portion. And when are you going to fix that clock back there, by the way?
My name is Lisa Barbary-Pigott, 67 Birch Avenue East, Farmingdale. Before I start, I'd like to thank Mr. Motisi for getting back to me so quickly about the issue at Salzman. I really, really appreciate how quickly, like, the email was sent and up a 10 minutes later, the phone was ringing. So thank you very much for getting back so quickly. At last board meeting, we were told by the attorney that we shouldn't be mad at our Board of Ed because they're just following the lead of New York State. And we should be mad at the leaders of the state level. After that meeting, it reminded me of comments that my mother used to tell me when I was younger. You going to follow your friend off the bridge when they jump? Or you going to make up your own mind? Some people may say what that has to do with this. I'll tell you. When you know someone has bad behavior, are you going to continue to follow the bad behavior? Or are you going to do what's right? I try in my daily life, always, to do what is right for myself and for others. My personal convictions may not be as others, but that doesn't bother me. I will do what I feel is right for myself and the children of Farmingdale School District. We know our new governor is issuing, is using the DOH to try to circumvent the government process. As we know, there are three branches of government. Our legislative branch is the branch of government that is allowed to make laws. The DOH is a non-elected agency. They are organized to enforce powers granted to them by our legislative branch of government. The DOH, and only the DOH, decided that this was an emergency. As we all know, the state of emergency ended June 24, 2021. There is no more state of emergency in New York. The public health emergence, therefore, the DOH is acting outside its scope of power and authority and continuing to act outside of its scope of power. In continuing to act outside of their scope and power, they have said that they are the only one that can renew these powers every 90 days as they feel fit. Besides, they have granted themselves this power. They have illegally circumvented the power of the legislative branch of New York State. Now that we have let them do this and not just and just followed their bad behavior, this is, they're going to continue to impose more requirements on us illegally. Rules by mandates are not rules. They're not law. They're just guidance. We cannot continue to give them this power and sit idly by. So yes, we are mad at the board for just following the bad behavior. We need you as sailors to prove to this generation in front of us that we are here to fight at every cost for these children and the children-
Ma'am?
Ma'am, your three minutes is up, so just finish up, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our founding fathers gave us the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and civil rights for a reason. These documents come first and foremost and always come before the laws and mandates of the state. Abraham Lincoln said, "A government that was made of the people, by the people, and for the people shall not perish from earth." Well, if we continue to follow this bad behavior, it will perish from earth. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak this session?
Hi. My name is Gerard Farrell, 25 Dolphin Drive, Farmingdale. I want to thank Barbara and Eric, and forgive me, I forgot your name, for their eloquent words, which, you know, I sign the position and certainly stand behind. If, I just want to speak to one thing, and I didn't prepare remarks. I just, this is because last night was back-to-school night. And there was a meeting with my daughter Christina's fourth grade teacher. And there was a palpable sadness to it when they spoke to the fact that parents can, at the current time, not go into the classroom for parties. And I think of it more for even the youngest students in the district who, some of my fondest memories are doing the secret reader, going into the class for the kids. And my boys who are in high school now absolutely loved it, and they're cherished memories for them. And so if the board could consider, you know, really reconsider that policy. It all goes with, you know, local decisions. And I personally think it's an easy one because we're depriving the kids themselves of really a special moment when their mom or dad comes. Thank you.
Hi. Kelly Shade, 25A Locust Avenue East, Farmingdale, 11735. I don't have any formal comments written up, but I just wanted to give you some insight from my children. I had to, one of my, I have a six-year-old and a seven-year-old. My seven-year-old goes to Salzman, my six-year-old is in the ICT class at Northside. So I needed to fill out a social, emotional evaluation form for my six-year-old today. One of the questions on there is, "How has COVID possibly affected my children or family members?" And the answer was immediately clear. My children have no idea why the schools are a bad place to be, why the virus is only in the schools. They don't have to wear masks anywhere else. They don't understand. I teach my kids to be critical thinkers. I teach them to ask questions and not blindly follow along. And they're like, "Why are the schools dirty? Why are schools unhealthy? Maybe we should stay at home then." You're making kids afraid to go to school. We need you guys to fight for us because this is what you're doing to our kids. You don't think these other kids are thinking this? The kids are out. They're out with their friends. They're out with their classmates. They're playing with them all summer long. They're inside, they're outside with the same people that they're going to school with. And in school, they can't touch each other's things, and they have to stay away from each other, and they have to wear masks, and they don't understand it. The school shouldn't be a place that they fear is dirty and is dangerous to their health. That's it. That's all I wanted to mention. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Liz Mayer. I'm 96 Jerome Drive in Farmingdale. I consider myself a new parent to this district. My daughter started kindergarten last year, and like you said at the last meeting, last year was really sad. But we were looking forward to the beginning of this year with the, you know, kids going back to school. At that point, masks were optional, sports being back, extracurricular activities. So I was very disappointed with getting notification that back-to-school night was virtual. Not being able, as a class parent last year, not being able to go into my daughter's classroom for birthday parties. So thank you very much for bringing that up. I don't know my daughter's school, and yes, I give a lot of credit to these teachers. They are doing a great job, but I don't know them. And also, like, the parent-teacher conference, why is that virtual? I thought we were back in person. So as a new member to this district, I'm kind of disappointed so far. And I'm hoping that maybe come end of October, the parent-teacher conference won't be virtual, and I can actually meet my teacher in person. So thank you.
Hi. My name is Pamela Valenti. My address is on file. I just want to thank everyone who's commented so far. You are definitely the voice of Farmingdale and the voice of our children and our beliefs. So thank you. You brought up a very good point, sir. In person, being able to look someone in the face is a really important connection. And Mr. Defendini, when we had met virtually over the summer, we had talked about the fact that I was going to have a meeting with the middle school staff, and we were hoping that it was going to be in person. Unfortunately, the meeting had to be done virtually, and I don't understand why. And even last year, I had said to people, "I'll meet you outside." Literally, like, we can sit outside and we can stay spaced, or I'll talk through a window. Whatever it is, there's something to be said about the connection of being able to look at someone in the face and see their reactions. So the meeting was virtual. Fine. That's the way it had to be. I was so disappointed, and I hope that there is no negative recourse on my daughter. But I have to tell you, so many teachers and staff in general had their cameras off. I'm a teacher myself. I found that so insulting. Are you grading papers? Am I taking up your time? I'm not really sure. Are you eating lunch? Like, I don't know what's going on. Like, I don't know what's going on. But the fact that I was looking at a screen of people's names, when I did virtual learning, I insisted that my children have their cameras on unless it was an emergency. Did all of those staff have an emergency? Or did they not, were they never told that it is a courtesy to have your camera on and look at people and allow them to look at you while you're speaking? There were times I didn't even know who was speaking. So I just want to bring that up, because it reminds me of what you said, and it reminds me of what everyone else is saying. I understand that we need to be safe, and I understand that there are guidelines that we need to follow, but the fact that people can't look each other in the face is deteriorating our district and our society for that matter. My husband didn't mind as much as I did, because he's not an educator, but I said, "They know better." Okay? And maybe they don't, and that's why I'm bringing it up. As a professional courtesy, I would like my next meeting to be in person, because I don't want to look at people's backgrounds. I want to look them in the face, and I want them to look at me when we're speaking. Thank you.
My name's Harry Coffin, I live at 8 Lenore Lane, Farmingdale, 11735.
Excuse me for one moment, Mr. Goldberg, this will be the last speaker. We're almost finished with the 30 minutes.
Okay.
I was Coffin, C-O-F-F-I-N. So, 2019 on Bloomberg TV, an interviewer was interviewing Dr. Fauci, this is pre-COVID, so there's no COVID bias. They were talking about infectious diseases, and he said, "If I had an infectious disease, a respiratory infectious disease, and I didn't want to infect you, I should wear a mask." Fauci stopped him. He laughed, that snicker he does, he laughed, and he said, "That may stop a droplet, but we don't want to get paranoid. You should be exercising, you should be eating right," things like that. We know what Fauci says, what he said in February, in May, we kind of know the narrative. I spent four years in the Marines, 97 to 2001, so if there's anything I value more, it's my kids' freedom. And the way I look at it right now is that with the vaccine mandates coming down, because the mask mandate is where it starts. The vaccine mandates are coming down. The FDA has already said five-to-11-year-olds are going to eventually be approved. So the way I see it is our board members, the six of you, you have my children, my six-year-old and my 10-year-old, you have these girls over here, and you have all these people, you have their children's lives in your hands. So why would that be? Well, as of VAERS, the Vaccine Adverse Event Report System, there's been 14,925 deaths reported. In order to get reported to VAERS, the CDC has to confirm it, and these people get a VAERS ID. That is more deaths than every vaccination combined from 1990 to 2021. I'm not saying don't get a vaccination, I'm saying it should be a choice. And right now, we have a choice with our mask mandates. We have local control. They've already mentioned the federal mandates, I'm sorry, the state mandates, they're not state laws. We're asking you to stand with other districts, because there's obviously great strength in numbers. And I don't think, I don't think I can be any more blunt, but this is where the battle starts. And if you think we're overreacting, you wait two months, because in two months, then it's going to be the shot. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, sir. Thank you, everyone, for your comments and concerns. I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the August 25th meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 25th, 2021 special meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the September 1st meeting.
I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the September 1st meeting.
Second. Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mrs. Rogers, have we received any correspondence this month?
Yes, of course, of course, just give me one moment, please. The board, excuse me, the board had received emails both in support of and against mask wearing in schools. They, there was an email regarding giving the students mask breaks, an email regarding mask wearing during physical education classes, a request for expanded information on the weekly COVID reports that are sent out from the district, information about CO2 sensors, questions on the completion of asbestos abatement, information regarding parental rights, local control, a question about the Facilities Advisory Commission, I'm sorry, Committee. An opinion was sent to us on the events regarding last month's public participation, and finally, a New York Times opinion article was shared with the board regarding board meetings. That was all for this month, I believe that most, if not all, have been responded to.
Thank you, Mrs. Rogers. Are there any committee reports from the board?
I have a short one, might. The library, you know, Farmingdale Public Library, just three, three quick points. They have a new COVID photo exhibit on display now. They're starting building repairs on the outside of the building shortly, within the next couple of weeks. Also on the fence, they're going to start their repairs on the fence. That was pretty much it for the meeting, and then they broke into executive session.
Okay, thank you, Mario. So last night, Arlene and myself and some other board members attended the PTA meetings, the elementary, there was Woodward Parkway, Northside, and Albany Avenue all had their meetings, very nice turnouts, you know, they were virtual. I just want to, you know, thank the PTAs, because although their meetings were virtual, they are doing a lot of in-person events coming up, boutaculas, and the beginning of the year's barbecues, and they've really done a great job, the PTAs, in this year, in keeping the school community as involved and together as possible.
I have, just really quick, a few of us attended the 9/11 memorial at the Farmingdale Library, and it was a very nice turnout, considering that it had to be rescheduled. I think the hardest part about it is everyone that was there, they kept bringing up the 20th anniversary and the 20th anniversary, and when I think of an anniversary, I think of a celebratory thing. I grew up with people celebrating their anniversaries. So it was really hard, and I had such mixed emotions about being at a 20th anniversary of something that really took so much away from so many of us. And I just thought it was, it was a great night, how it, I think it was a combined choir, Ms. Tucker, and they did a phenomenal job, so kudos to all of those children. And the fire department was there, and there was some very good representation. But it really was a wonderful evening, if you haven't seen the memorial. It is in front of the library, as you head in the driveway to the right. Feel free, there was actually some family members, I believe it was, I'm sorry, I'm not going to say the person's name, I'd probably say it wrong, represented there. And there's two benches that were dedicated to the people from Farmingdale that were lost in 9/11. So again, if you get an opportunity to go there, it really is a great opportunity just to reflect on where we've been and where we're headed, and again, just that celebration of the people's lives and everybody that put forth themselves that day. So it was, it was a really beautiful event.
Thank you, Arlene. So our board is very busy with a lot of committees, as you could just see and hear what committees are out there now for us to attend. 24/7, all through the year. So the last two committees that had met, one last night, was Youth Council. And Youth Council, Anthony and I are on the board there, and just wanted to let everyone know that a lot of our programs are up and running. The summer program did absolutely fantastic, even though we had a limited program this year. Next year will be better, it'll be different. Our winter program right now is, registration is going to be online, it's out there, we have lots of programs for our resident students, and please look on the website, if you didn't have the flyer that came out in May, please check FarmingdaleYouthCouncil.org, there's a lot of programs for our kids, and they're very reasonably priced. We also have, through our Youth Council program, programs from Farmingdale Soccer Club, Farmingdale Baseball, Farmingdale PAL, and St. Killian CYO, and Farmingdale Aquatics. We have many wonderful programs that are discounted to our residents, so please check that out on Farmingdale's website, Farmingdale Youth Council website, it's also on the School District website, and each of the organizations have their own. So please partake in that, it's all about getting the kids, keeping them busy. We also have Chamber of Commerce, just attended a meeting with that, Suzanne and I are on the board for Chamber of Commerce. They do wonderful, wonderful things for our community, they help our students too with internships and many opportunities at the high school, with our businesses right here in Farmingdale. They've had very, very busy with ribbon cuttings this past year, a lot of businesses are hopping on Chamber to be a part of our community. They have a comedy night set up in October, you can check the website, Farmingdale Chamber. The comedy night is going to be held on October 14th, right now, the tickets are on sale. The proceeds from many of the things that Chamber does goes to our students at the high school, particularly for scholarships. So partake in some of the activities, that would help our students as well. And Farmingdale Chamber is going to be sponsoring on October 2nd, it's a Saturday, from 10 to 1, at the Farmingdale Public Library, a shred event, document shred event. So I'm sure I have piles at home that I'm going to bring, personal papers, three boxes per person, free, just come out, bring your stuff, they'll shred it right in front of you, and it, they'll take donations if you want to, for scholarships for our students, but in any event, it's free, and it's on October 2nd from 10 to 1. So come on down with a couple bags, we have to shred, and we'll do, we'll take care of it for you. Other than that, does anyone else have, it's on for Youth Council or Chamber? Suzanne? There are events coming up on the Chamber for our community, so check out the website. There's nothing right now that I can talk to, but I will bring that up on our next board meeting next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Just very quickly, with respect to PAL, we are in week three of our flag football program, and for those parents that may have been down the last couple of weeks, opening day could not have gone any better, it was a fantastic event, parents had a great time, the kids, more importantly, had a fantastic time. The PAL president, Russ Katanzaro, was actually jokingly complaining that he kept tripping on all the grass that was on the field there at Woodward, so that was a very positive thing, the fields looked tremendous, and it was just really fun to see the kids running around, having a great time, playing flag football. A lot of them said that they missed the sport a lot. The coaches were great, the kids were great, the parents were fantastic, the day, the weather was beautiful, so it was really a good celebration for our community, for our schools and for our kids. We are also doing registration for PAL basketball, that'll be starting, well, the registrations are ongoing, PAL basketball will be starting probably toward the middle to end of November, December, and we'll let the community know. PAL is also having its monthly meeting next week, October 4th, at the PAL clubhouse, which is 31 North Front Street, if anyone's interested, you could always stop in. But it is great to see the kids back, and we hope to keep going with the programs and allowing the kids that opportunity to get out and have a great time.
Are you guys planning on deck hockey this year?
Yes.
Thank you.
Susan, new goaltender. Before we close out the committee reports, I would just like to congratulate one of our own amazing educators in the high school, Jim Hughes, was elected to the Wrestling Hall of Fame, I don't think Jim is here. Is he here? Oh, there he is. For those in the audience that have not had the honor of having Jim Hughes as a teacher, just wait, and when your kids get to high school, hopefully you get him, he is an amazing educator, and not only an amazing educator, but an amazing man, an amazing person to be around. Congratulations, Jim. Okay, thank you. I'd like to open the meeting for the second public participation. Once again, please be sure to clearly state your name and address when you approach the microphone, as a reminder, public participation will be limited to 30 minutes, each individual speaker will have three minutes in which to ask their questions or to make any statements, and the district clerk will hold the time for us. The meeting will now open for 30 minutes.
Hi, I'm Maureen Bariloff at 7 Circle Drive, Farmingdale, New York, 11735. I don't know if this is the platform to ask this question, but I haven't heard much about prom this year, my daughter is a senior in Farmingdale High School, and I'm just curious, what are the protocols this year for prom? I did hear that there may be mask wearing, but I didn't receive anything, so I'm just curious if anyone has a clue what's going on with that.
Mr. Defendini, will notice be going out on that?
So a notice will be going out from the high school, Dr. Thompson and/or the advisors will handle, you know, adhering to whatever the protocols might be with regard to prom, so you will be getting a notice, obviously, prior to the start of the prom.
Okay, so there's nothing as of now, no one has an idea of what's going to happen with prom, in terms of mask wearing or testing or any of that?
Yeah, not at this time, I would wait on that from Dr. Thompson, I could certainly remind him, you know, just making sure that whatever it is that's decided upon is clearly articulated to the community.
Okay, yeah, because it's about six weeks away, I think, five or six weeks, so I was just curious when that's going to come out. All right, thank you so much.
Jeff Roth, address on file. I'm surprised, the first response of the evening. Is this what's going to go on, you're afraid to respond to anything that's said publicly? All right, I got a question about your 3,279,000 hours COVID relief, what the district's going to be doing with that. You have some sort of issue going on. I know, Kathy, you just said on how busy the committees have been, so I would like to know why there's been this dance going back and forth of whichever two board members are the ones that, if I want to ask a question, for example, about the FOIL request I put in on the change orders of the Aquatic Center, I should be able to speak directly to those boards that are on that committee, just like it used to be Russ and John, okay? So, now we got, there's another thing about your, let's put it this way, go on page 13 of your comprehensive safety plan, Michael, and originally I put in a FOIL of all your comprehensive safety plans going back to 2000, and you never responded to that FOIL because you didn't have safety comprehensive plans made in 2000. You recently started posting them on your website. All right, so, now, I'm going to give you a little quote, some quotes from the blast of the past here. One was, and this is in testimony, "It was well-known to other students and staff, and were and/or should have been known by defended Farmingdale Union Free School District." Another quote, "Had prior actual and constructive notice given to the English teacher for the improper conduct, behavior, and/or bad acts." Quote, "Engaged in inappropriate instant messages and pictures through social media approximately 8,000."
Excuse me?
Excuse me? No. Excuse you!
Mr. Roth.
Excuse me, don't interrupt my three minutes.
Mr. Roth.
Excuse you!
Mr. Roth.
No, excuse you!
Mr. Roth, please hear, Mr. Rogers out.
Then is the clock stopped?
I will gladly reset the time.
Okay, what's your question, Mary Rogers?
I do not believe that the comments that you're about to state should be publicly made according to our policy.
Hey, I offered the invitation to talk to you, you guys are the ones that are You guys are the ones that are afraid to speak to me and don't try to claim because of ongoing litigation. Okay? So you could play this game back and forth. And you, all right, so let's end, let's end that. Let's just talk about this. What did you do with the video? Did you save it in your investigation file? Answer, I did not. I can't recall if I was smart enough to preserve it. I can't recall. Then later on, let's put it as another one. What did you do with that video? Did you save it? I did not. No, I didn't unless there was a file that existed that we made back when then. I am forgetting what was actually made. Well, you know what that's called? You destroyed evidence is what that's called. But now I'm sure you put the protocols in on how you're going to take the surveillance system. And I brought this up about student privacy rights. First of all, it's supposed to be a two key operation. The technician and the administrator have to be there before you access any of the files in your surveillance system. And this was discussed in 2000, okay? Not with your district, a district that was smart enough. So now I'm sure you resolved this in your comprehensive safety plan, but when I perused it, the one online, I didn't see any protocols and procedures put in place about accessing your surveillance footage and how you're going to protect not only the students' privacy, okay, but the parents. Hey, listen, would you want, would you want a video of your kid picking their nose, going viral all over the place because some security guard thought it was funny and decided to film it on his phone and throw it online? There's a perfect example of Jay-Z, when he, him and Beyonce got into a fight in the elevator with Beyonce's sister and the security guard leaked the footage. And you don't tell me it didn't go on at schools because I could tell you three other school districts that are dealing with disciplining right now somebody that inappropriately broadcast surveillance footage of students engaged in an inappropriate act. Let's just put it that way. So with that said, how many minutes do I have left, by the way? I'm waiting for the time clock.
You have 30 seconds.
Mr. Roth, hold on one second.
You have 30 seconds.
Mr. Roth, if you want to know the time, hold on, she'll tell you.
I don't like to be interrupted telling me I have 30 seconds left. Get a stopwatch and have it a countdown just like they have in the county, the state, and every other meeting. We pay enough in taxes, you could afford a time clock with a stopwatch display so I could time what I have to say.
No, your time is up. Mr. Roth, your time is up.
No, your time is up.
Your time is up. Have a good night. Have a good night, Mr. Roth.
Wow. The "I got you" moment right there, huh? Crazy. I just wanted to let you know that there's, there is a little bit more of an impact than sometimes people give. And I just didn't have time before, so I just wanted to explain just my own personal idea. So my daughter's in third grade. She's eight years old. She's the happiest little child you've ever met. And I'm not saying it because it's me or my daughter because my other two are not that. She's literally just, everyone loves her to death everywhere she goes. And she lost her half a year of first grade and all of second grade, and now she's in third grade and she's deteriorating. She is scared and she has social anxiety and she doesn't trust so many people and she's always with her dad, which is kind of selfishly awesome for me, but really heartbreaking at the same time. And that's just an eight-year-old. And it's, I can't say it's all mask related. It's obviously COVID-related in the world and the scared and whatever you're hearing. Little people hear big people's stories sometimes when you don't think they do. But it's definitely hurting her not to see people's faces and smiles. And her biggest thing is her smile. And when she's got her mask on, people just don't understand who she is and that she literally can walk by anybody and make your day amazing. And that really is hurtful to her. And I just want you to know that. And it's really killing me. My son, who is one of the smartest kids ever and doesn't shut up like me, is having a really hard time in fifth grade. He knows answers and he wants to say things and people always want to talk to him and he's not able to really do that. And he gets in trouble quite often because he needs mask breaks and he takes them when he needs them, but he gets yelled at quite often on that. And he feels like maybe he's a bad kid now over masks. Go figure. And then my eighth grader who wants to be on cheer, as we said, she's scared to not have a mask. How ridiculous. She needs it on her chin or she needs it with her in a pocket somewhere because if she doesn't have it, she feels like she's going to be in trouble for it. And she's not sure that if we didn't have masks anymore, which is fine, that she wouldn't need it with her forever. Just put that in your head as to not the sickness, not this, not that, but what we're really doing to the kids. And that's just my three. So thank you.
Hi, Rebecca Dorfmeister. My address is on file. As I mentioned at the last meeting, my now eight-year-old has forever changed from these mask mandates in school. The seven-year-old I sent to school at the beginning of last year is not the child I now have. So I made the unfortunate, difficult decision to homeschool her even though she's not necessarily the greatest candidate for homeschooling because she likes learning from people who are not her mother. But we're trying our best to make it work and some days are great and some days are not. And then there are the days that just as a parent break your heart because she wants to be in school, no matter how hard her year was last year. She wants to be back in school. And she's sad and she's frustrated and she's angry that she can't be in school. Last week, we took one morning where we had to stop what we were doing because we couldn't move on because she's so angry and so frustrated that we had to take the couch cushions off the couch and pretend that it is the governor's former and current so that she could beat them with pillows so that we could then move on with our school day. Because she is so upset and frustrated and angry at the situation she is left with through no fault of her own. She trusts the adults and she wants to be a part of the school that she was a part of for a year and a half before she, her world turned upside down. She wants the world back, that she remembers it. She's not afraid of COVID because I had it and most likely my husband and she had it without any symptoms. And we're fine and we're here to tell about it. She's not afraid of that. She's afraid of things not being the way she remembers them. She wants to be with her friends. She wants to be in school. And I now have a child who doesn't know how to process her emotions because all that has happened. And I just beg you to please stand with Massapequa and Locust Valley. They are fighting for the children. You have all said. I've heard all along that your hands are tied. Now is your chance to prove that either they were not tied and you're willing to fight or that you lied. Because here is your chance. Show everybody that you really want what is best for these children. Thank you.
Hi. I'm just going to have to do this. Danielle Tabalero, 6 North Summit Drive, North Massapequa, Badaam Farmingdale School District. I just want to thank Mr. Difendini. I've spoken with him on the phone. I think I had a mental breakdown with you right before school started about masks. That was me. And I really want to appreciate you, you know, hearing me out and just being, you know, I guess a shoulder to literally cry on in my car. I had to pull over. I have a four-year-old and a six-year-old. This is annoying. How do you do this? Thank you. I'm sorry. I have a four-year-old and a six-year-old and I don't ever plan on talking because I get over emotional. I just wanted to reiterate what the other parent had said about the in-person. My experience as a parent has been horrible, not horrible, I don't want to say that, but so much has been taken from us from COVID and so much has been taken of our children and so much has been taken of our first-time parents. My kindergartner, I couldn't go into her school. I couldn't see her classroom. Like, these things like are, I don't mean to be selfish, but like that was my first child in school. That was my, and I'm a Daler. I grew up in Farmingdale. And it was just really disheartening to see that I couldn't go in. And even this year, I went for class parent thinking that I could go into the school because I didn't go up for it last year. And to hear that I might not be able to come in to see my kids, my kid on her, you know, the party or her birthday, like that's just, we're eight, we're almost two months into this and I know you guys all say your hands are tied, but they're not tied. You went with the, you went with mask optional. There's lawsuits. We actually, I was part of this signing where we got the signatures. We had steady people coming in for two hours. This was only done through a Facebook group. There's more people out there. I'm not trying to be like, you know, but there are so many who are contacting us, can we sign? Can we sign? Where do we sign? How can we get it? How can we do this? They're come, like, we're not, we're not going to stop this. And we really want you to just be on board with the parents because you said you would be. And like, they called a bluff and we don't want it to be a bluff. I know, like I said, I'm not trying to be antagonistic here, but I also have a four-year-old and I almost pulled him. He's doing the UPK program. I don't know if that's, you know, anything to do with you guys. I know it's through a grant. I almost pulled him because he can't wear a mask. And to tell you, my children are actually okay with the masks. It was me that was like, I don't want them in a mask. I don't want it. And I know some people think that's selfish, but my children and I have had COVID. They were fine. I was sick. It stunk. My husband's NYPD officer, he probably had it 10 times over. We're all dealing with this ridiculousness and I'm sick of it. And I'm not going to let this happen. I will pull my kid when that max vaccine mandate comes down because it's coming. So you need to take a stand now. We implore you to take a stand now. We will get more signatures if we have to. I do thank you for your time and for everything you do for these kids. Thank you.
Come on, Barbara, you can make it up there.
I can do it. Okay. I'm your new mic. I actually wasn't planning on standing up a second time. I think I said what I needed to say as far as the petition, but so many parents have shared some personal stories and I... I want to share mine. I did make the decision to pull my children from Farmingdale because of what they went through last year and the psychological damage that they experienced. Eric and Rebecca, all these kids, they're not isolated incidences. My Lexi, again, Harper's best friend, was bright and shining and full of energy. And by the end of the year, she was like a beaten down dog that I couldn't get to go on the bus. So I stand here and I'm pretty tough sometimes and I, you know, say what I need to say, but I need you to know, we need our board to stand up for local control and stand up so us as a community can make these decisions. The only ask of you tonight is to have a meeting and take the consultation. Can we please leave here with that commitment? Please.
Mrs. Booth, we will review your petition and the board will have a discussion about it. That's what I can commit to at this very moment. Ma'am, please do not yell out from the crowd. Thank you.
So I spoke before, so do I guess state my name again?
My name is Nicole Nafo. My address is on file.
Ma'am, somebody else is speaking right over there?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. No, go ahead, go ahead. And thank you for your service, by the way.
Thank you, thank you. This just brought something up. So as far as pulling kids from school, I'm already looking out of state. I don't want to move out of state because I'm not really the type to kind of run from something. I'd rather stay and fight. And I truly intend on staying and fighting for our kids and their freedoms and, you know, the control of their bodies and all those things. But when it comes down to it, I know, I can't pull my kids out of school, homeschool them because we can't afford it because we live on Long Island. I mean, you guys know this. So we've already looked at moving out of state. I'm looking, and I'm looking in all sorts of states. So, and I don't think I'm the exception to the rule, just so you know.
Thank you for your service, sir.
My name is Nicole Nafo and my address is on file. What you just said to me right now, Mr. Goldenberg, you are proven to us that you do not care. Okay? Everyone, you have 400 signatures proven asking you to please stand up for these kids. My child is in kindergarten, okay? Last year, she had to wear a mask. She told me she's afraid to have her friends touch her because she don't want to have germs, okay? My, I'm in, I'm in the healthcare field. I'm trying to fight for my job right now as we speak, okay? I don't need my five-year-old to tell me, mommy, so-and-so is going to touch me and spread her germs. How can any one of you sit on this panel right now and not see that this is affecting our children psychologically? How could you sit there and look at us? You're going to look at a document? You have 400 signatures. I'm sick of this. And when you're all up, I'm voting every single one of you out. And if I have to run myself, I will. You just proved you don't care about our children. Shame on you.
Okay, ma'am. Ma'am, we just received this petition about less than an hour ago. We were asked to review it and we will do that. I apologize for that then. Would anybody else like to speak right now and not yelling from the crowd? Anybody else like to come to the microphone and speak?
I am just curious, is there a reason you can't just vote right now?
We cannot vote. We just received it. We will have a meeting about it, Ms. Booth. That's what you asked for.
But shouldn't we all be able to make a?
We cannot just vote in public at this very moment to do that. Would anybody else like to speak?
What if you go into the back, deliberate and come back?
Ms. Booth. Would anybody else like to speak?
Okay, sorry, I'm nervous. My name is Liliana Schumeyer. I live in 17 Mill Road, Farmingdale. Sorry, this isn't perfect, but I just wanted this to be heard. I'm the captain of the varsity cheer team along with Katie McLaughlin. I have been on the team since it first became a varsity cheer team. I'm up here regarding wanting to pull up the eighth graders. I have been coaching these girls since they were younger through the Florida Hawks. Making me physically, making me know what they are physically capable of as of right now. We are not the same team that won states. It was the most amazing feeling an athlete could have. There are five of us left that won Nassau County Championships and state champs. And we want our team to experience that unexplainable feeling that we did a couple of years ago. We are hoping you please consider to allow us pull up the eighth graders. We will have a better chance to become a new team and win another state title. These girls are physically capable of becoming one of us and we would love to have them a part of a team to be so special.
Thank you, girls, and congratulations. You guys, girls have done an amazing job with the team. Would anybody else like to speak at this point in time?
Hi, Pamela Lenti again. I'm just wondering if we can get a timeline. I don't think that that's an unreasonable question. I know that perhaps you can't speak right now about this, but we need to know. And we never get a response. There's not an email. There's not a, anything. We get notifications about everything in the world, but not what we're concerned about and what we come to talk about during these board meetings. This time, we can't just hope that something is happening. Something has to happen now. So can we at least get a timeline from you as to when we will get some sort of response? We deserve that. And we can have an emergency session if need be. Or we can have you go behind the door and go like this and we won't know who voted for what, which seems wrong. We just need the vote, okay?
Okay. We're not going to, we're not going to vote on this tonight, ma'am.
But again, can you, can you give us a timeline?
We will call a meeting with, Paul, we have a meeting next?
Yeah, we can, we can, we can work with the Board of Education in order to come up with a calendar and certainly share that out with the community so that way you do have a commitment as to the timeline between now and the point in time when the board makes a decision.
But that, but, I'm sorry, I don't understand. Did I miss the date?
We don't have a date.
No. We need this to be done immediately.
Mr. Booth, you asked us to review it. We said we review it. Is that not what you asked earlier? Is that not what you said you asked earlier, ma'am?
No, I'm just saying I don't understand. Mr. Difendini, I know you answered, but I don't know, like, did you tell me like a week, two weeks, three weeks? I don't know what you're telling me.
Yeah, sure. So, so we will work on it. You're asking for what is the commitment of time to schedule this? I mean, you're asking us.
And to reply. We need to have a response and we need to have action or a meeting to discuss why there's not going to be action.
We understand that. We'll, we'll put together a schedule so that the Board of Education can have a conversation about this item. There are schedules at play here that we have to make sure that everyone has the availability of time to make sure we have that conversation.
I would think it should be prioritized though, no? Well, shouldn't it be prioritized? Is something really that much more important than our children's safety and mental, physical health?
Ma'am, we will meet very shortly. Does anybody else like? Does anybody else like to... Please stop screaming for the audience, or I will adjourn the meeting. Mr. Roth. Have a good night, Mr. Roth. I will.
Parsa Green, the Eighteen Hill Road, Farmingdale. This young lady just read it to you in like a few minutes. How long do you need to get together and read it? It's time-sensitive. Other school districts are going in with this lawsuit. We can't wait weeks and find out we missed our opportunity. So how long do you need? You have all this immense power, have the power to sit down right now and say, we're gonna meet in a few days, we'll read it over like she just read in a few minutes, and we'll make a decision. You literally could do it right now, but you're choosing not to. I know there are rules, but there's never been something like this in the history of any of our lives. Maybe you can make an exception, see us as human beings, and see that kids are being hurt psychologically and physiologically. This has never happened before. I mean, maybe you don't have kids in school, but we do. So maybe you could put the rules aside for a second, be human beings, come down to our level and say, okay, let's meet, let's talk, let's give these people an answer. Because every day that goes by that these kids get on the bus is torture for us. I got three kids in school. They all go to Northside. We don't need it. When our kids come home and they don't look the same, they're dreaded. You think masks are clean? You think what you're wearing on your face right now is doing anything for you? It is ridiculous. Eight to 10% maybe protection. You're walking around with fake protection on your face. These kids are disgusting. You ever see kids? They play in dirt, they wipe snot, and then they wipe it on their hands, put it on their mask, and put it on their face. It's gross. This is negligence. This is child abuse. Okay? Get together, read the damn thing, give us an answer. Because it is time-sensitive, and if we miss our opportunity to join the other lawsuits, it's not gonna be good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Goldenberg, there's three minutes left, so one more speaker to them.
This will be the last speaker for the evening.
Kelly Shade, so you have my address on file again. So you've heard the emotional pleas. This is from all of us. This is, we're parents. These are children. These are real people. These are little people with fragile psyches that have been destroyed slowly, day after day after day. You guys need to take the emotional aspect of these children seriously and try and do something for us parents. We need to have some sort of answer. We need to have some sort of definitive answer, and it's gotta be sooner rather than later. You're destroying our children. We want to see that you want to fight for our children. You want to talk about Farmingdale family and Dalea pride? Where is it? Fight for your children. Fight for these Dalea pride children. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. The board will be meeting very shortly to discuss this. Can I have a motion to adjourn, Mrs. D'Amico?
I make a motion to adjourn.